All right, good evening everyone and welcome to Monday, March 6th Crestwood School District Study Session. I hereby call the meeting to order at 5 o'clock. Mr. Secretary, please take role. Aman here, trustee Fawaz.
Here.
Trustee Sabo.
Here.
Trustee Williamson.
Here.
Trustee Barry.
Here.
Vice President Bedun.
Here.
Madam President. President Elzayat is running just a little bit behind with the weather. She'll be here in a few minutes. Okay. All right. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you Vice President Bedun, Board. So today's study session is going to be a replica of the first study session we did with the policy. So as we, everyone is aware, Policy 0000, the first set of policies, we did our two readings that will be part of the vote for tonight. Superintendent's Agenda. For today, what I sent, I sent the board, and it was funny, trustee Williams, you're 100% right. I sent the memo about copies, but then I sent you guys a thousand copies of this, but because hearing your feedback after, thank you. Hearing your feedback after the last policy review, what I did was I sent you for the weekend, the policy, the updates, the recommendations, so you'd have an opportunity to look at them once, so that when you come in, you can go through and do your final touch-ups, so on and so forth, and have conversation. The other thing too is, we're gonna do Policy 2000 in the next board meeting. We're gonna focus on Policies 1000s and 3000s for a couple reasons. 2000s is very long, and there's a lot more detailed information in the 2000s, so you may need a little bit more time for that. The 1000s and the 3000s, they're really, a lot of it are very straightforward. And a lot of it is, much of it is mandated by law, is when you see on the top, you see the MCL, you know, those are legalities. Many of the recommendations in these is just for streamlining, and there's a lot of recommendations in these where it says, if it's in the bargaining agreement, if you already have this in place, you don't put it as a policy. So there are some policies in here, and when you read it and you've gone through it, you'll see that, you'll see whole sections read it out, because there are things we already have in the collective bargaining agreement, there are things that we don't have to put in policy due to that. So, we're gonna go back into, bless you, back into those groups. And I will go through with everyone, the process again. So it looks like everybody's already in their group, the way they're sitting, I didn't realize that. Except Salwa, so if you wanna move over there, and then Dania, when she comes, she'll jump in with you. And then Billy and Eddie, you're good. If Linda can jump in with Hasbi, and then Andrea, if you wanna just jump in with the two groups over there, and I'll walk around, and we can go from there. So, Mo, Salwa, and David, you are blue, so you'll start with this. So again, I'll go through it real quick. Black is Billy and Eddie.
I'll come to you.
Are you sure?
Yeah, of course.
There you go. And as a reminder, it is a live study session, mics are on, video is on.
Yeah.
So let's just go through real quick the process again, just so that we're all on the same page. So again, the process. So we got this slated for 30 minutes for each group, 30 minutes for each group. And again, each group needs to identify a recorder, a timekeeper, and a taskmaster. The recorder keeps us on time, in the 30-minute time limit, keeps us moving. I'm sorry, the timekeeper does that. The recorder, remember, you're only going to have one set of documents, they're gonna have your notes that come to me. So the recorder has to do those set for each one, because that's why we do it by color, so that when I give you the report out. And then the taskmaster, just to make sure that we're staying focused and on target. Again, a lot of this, you're gonna see, there's a lot of policies in here that have zero change, so those, you know, will be quick too. Are there any questions before we begin? All right, so it is five after five, we're ready, we're right on target, we're gonna go first round up to 5:35.
Thank you Dr. Masalim. Dr. Masalim?
Yes.
There's an X that says option one.
So we took option one instead of option two?
Right. Was this a part of option one?
No, it's a, it's not mandatory.
So we took it out?
Yeah, we took it out.
That's how Naola had it?
Uh huh.
What I, I mean, I would like to see what it is currently, do we have that?
It'll just confuse you, it'll be perfectly honest with you.
Okay, I just, my thing is taking out language that I will never know when I'm taken out, and then never get it back. You know what I mean? Like, once it's gone, it's gone.
A lot of this is options, you have, they're, you look at it, it's the same options, so when you select an option, if we cross out the option, we don't select. There's nothing in here that we're crossing out that isn't mandatory.
Right, I see that.
Oh, this is the one.
Okay.
This is the one, Dr. Masalim.
Evaluation under the. That's the law.
That's the, that's the law. You know what I mean, that's, I mean.
The law is the law.
Right.
So these are all laws, so really, I really don't have. Right?
So this is just, we have to have this policy based on this guidance.
Correct. If you wanna read, Billy, you can, I'll listen to you. I read fast. Subject to criminal history requirements, we know that we have to do this, so I mean, really, there's no.
The only thing is just we use base evidence at no expense to the district.
Yeah, but there's also a.
I think I'm just going to what to change.
I see what you're saying, yeah. An applicant must have been at no expense of a district. A set of fingerprints, also, the district doesn't no longer pay for it?
We haven't.
No? We pay for it. I mean, I actually like that better, because I have so many people who, because we do it for Laurel. And we're spending all this money, and then they don't come through.
Right.
They don't come back to sub. I'm listing in a bunch of biofilm.
We just change to like for this. We just have to name who the complaints go to. And you have to have like a reviewer and investigator, so we have.
Okay, the names, titles, and contact, individuals will be published annually, so we need to make the decision of who we should go to first, is what you're saying.
And these are like for, these are for the tire my all the complaints. So like, if you look here, this one is with.
Okay, so that's not, I just.
So you don't name it, so like this is right now.
That is actually.
Yeah, so I wanna double check.
Yeah. And that's actually what I looked down on here, it was striking out.
Okay, the names, titles, and contact information of these individuals will be published annually on the school's district websites, and in the staff handbook, and the district annual report. Why wouldn't we do it on each website?
I understand that, that's why it just happens to have that case where.
This is for addresses in the workplace.
It is. Yeah, it's not, 'cause, well, actually, it struck out. I got an approval, and I was gonna ask to add it back in.
No, you could take, that one, you could say you want to.
I mean, this way, there's no excuse for anybody to say. Oh, that, it's not there.
Let me explain it to you.
All right. So, that stuff is all. Okay, so then we go to, and if you want to respond, okay, the decision of the superintendent shall be final.
Four.
The superintendent.
So this is again, they missed, they missed a quarter, right? If they're making this much, let's say they're making.
So they didn't achieve this one.
Let's say.
No, should be, yes, I agree. They're presented at their own cost, at any of the above described meeting areas, so they can get their own attorney, or is it?
Six, seventeen, end of the year, right? Yeah, end of the year, or whatever, 12, whatever. I believe they should be getting.
So now we're going to.
They missed a quarter. Twenty-five hundred times three, seventy-five hundred. That's something that I know Dr. Masalim.
The following options should be selected if district requires that the following items are not added to the. Accomplished in the proceedings for.
It's not how it is.
Amendmentation of any training provided to the district personnel made for the policy, including but not limited to notification of the provisions, expectations of staff set forth in this policy, and the role and responsibility of all district personnel involved in enforcing this policy, including their duty to report alleged violations. Well, I'd be interested to see.
So just for this one, you have to maintain it either way.
So it's not. So why are we pricing across?
Because it's already covered in earlier, so like, they, if you. Think that it's not covered. So these are all.
So just to strike it.
Also, you're saying that it's repetitive.
Well, it's, it's the idea that if it's not, if you, if you wanna go further.
Why do you wanna strike out of it again?
Like, the, from our reading, if.
No, you're okay.
Motivatedly, and it satisfies the law. Because you have to legally do the training, yes, and you have to keep it on record. So all of the pieces are required as part of your investigation, I say.
Yeah, but how do I know that, if it's not in here?
Because documentation of all actions to stop, or prevent, like, all documentation is all in the pieces above.
Okay.
It's all part of it, it's all kept.
Yeah, but I wanna make sure that it's shared, the way that, like, at, so we don't.
It's basically all being documented, and it's a bottom, it's just, basically, they're gonna be making comments. Got it, right. So now they all get paid over twelve.
So this is the in advance of anything.
Right, so are these things going to be available, or are we just striking?
Because when you look at the graph, it says like. So all reports are kept.
They're tapped, but are we?
So it's retained investigations, so all written reports are kept, all any narratives are kept. Any documentation that identifies the actions taken by the district personnel along the way is kept. Witness statements are kept, narrative notes are kept, whether that's audio, video, digital recordings.
Right.
Emails, texts, or meetables, notes are all kept.
So basically, it's repeating itself.
Yeah. Because all of that's required, and if it got to, the person is appealing, and it's going. They're coming to you, then at that point, all of that would have to be produced for you, like, if, let's say, you're notified in a memory prior to. If it gets to you here, all of this would have to become not privy to you.
But isn't it, is it, it's not privy to us because of this, is that what you're saying?
No, no, all has to be kept either way.
Either way, we would have access if we didn't.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
So this point was just that if, if.
We have 20 minutes per section.
We wanted to put all these extra safeguards in need kept, but it's.
Are we not better off, just to protect ourselves?
Then it's addition, so like, everything, every community, like, it's kept anyways, but now both parties have to get a copy of all of that, when technically we couldn't. So like, copies of any documents are submitted by the complaining, quote, respondent, so like, you're adding that. It almost makes it that's part of the investigation. It's up to you, like.
You're gonna give it to them anyway.
I'm not trying to talk you out of it, I'm just saying what our rationale.
Right, I would say that, yeah, if there was an investigation done, then both parties should have copies.
But they get that a buck.
I just wanna make sure that it's in there, so everybody.
Copies of any documentation that relates to this information. But it doesn't say that the person gives them. Documentation of all actions taken to stop the draft, or all the supportive measures to both parties.
I'd rather like to read.
The investigation.
So this one is on, I mean, just to be safe. I mean, if the person wants to keep their copies, they should give the title to keep their copies.
No, they are.
I just don't see that. Years to the district, term of extension violation to communicate the board's expectations to students.
We still agree on this one, so we struck these, because we, it's all covered in the investigation. No, in this investigation of all the materials, so trustee here is questioning that if you're here, it's saying.
Copies of any documentation, evidence used during informal and formal disciplinary meetings and hearings, including the investigation report, and any written responses submitted by the complainant or the respondent. Do they, they get, get to keep copies for themselves, right?
They do, it's here. It's in that.
Okay.
So that's why if you look at.
Copies of any documentation, but it, okay, it doesn't come out and say that they keep copies, so, right?
It does, but they can request.
It's all kept as part of the investigation.
So they're entitled to say that I'd like, but if they didn't know, they would be given the copies, right?
They can request.
But that's in the handbook, it's in the handbook.
Yeah, it's in the handbook, it's in the CFT, it's in the whole process. So, because none of this, all this stuff here is, represents an obligation. There's nothing in here that we don't do, because. I mean, if we were to have, if it doesn't matter, it's less. Less.
That's what I said, this is one that it's.
It really doesn't matter, this was more of a.
I said to protect us, I would just leave it in there, so there's no.
Minus this one, because we already do the training, we already have to keep the training.
We can add that, that's not.
Yeah, let's just do that. We're gonna go on to drug-free workplace, the board of education, the authority of education is not possible, and an offender affected by drugs. And we'll seek therefore to establish and maintain educational settings which. To enable students grow. Come directly. So what are we gonna do?
I'm assuming you're talking about. I'll show you why I struck out.
Before, whether this is manufacturing, or distribution.
Because of these dates.
Dispensing of any controlled substance, including alcohol by any member of the district's administration.
So right now, this 25%.
Oh, is this, what's our policy currently?
What's in place.
A drug policy. I understand, but what is our policy for our employees? Like, we don't do.
That's added by.
Under the influence?
Per state mandates.
Yeah, we have that issue.
So we found, or a state mandate, that should be called.
We have, we have those issues. We still have.
Because the state mandate's constantly changing. The current state mandate is 25%, it was supposed to go up to 40%, but it didn't, and it's gonna change again.
No, I understand, I'm just looking at.
Let's just ask him, what, combined?
Every year.
This just says we establish guidelines, we don't establish guidelines.
As state law, that's what I'm saying, person mandate, state law says, so technically, technically, and I would never ask this. If any teacher, anybody gets highly effective in three years, or two years in a row, they don't need to be, you don't have to evaluate. Technically, by state law. So that's what he was saying, was the fact that the last three years, if he's hitting the growth targets for the last three years, and he's saying highly effective, doesn't have to be evaluated.
I guess my confusion is. This is board policy, I gotta remember that.
Exactly, there's state mandates for growth. He's telling you they're 25%, they can go to 40%, we put 25%, and he's at 25%, and the state growth could be at 30%. Because I also kept in mind what you guys were talking about, in terms of, okay, what if you're not here next year? You know what I mean, we want policy. So I kept that in mind when I looked through these, and that's why I put per state mandates, because there are state mandates.
I'm good with that.
Thank you. I don't know why those are in color. It almost looks like it's gray. I don't know why one page would.
Everything's changing, no.
Yes, please. No, the color makes it easy.
Mr. Masalim, okay, so why don't we, we have to go back in time, we take this out here, why don't we toss this, and add who you wanna put this on top of this one?
This one's, okay, this is confusing.
This is for Barry, so this statement is the same as this statement.
It's the exact same. Here, we show establish whether or not a person is necessary beneath the federal services under compliance.
Girls are fine.
This says.
They're just what, not slippery, but just what? I was the assailant, that's what I wanted to text you guys, I'm like, I'm the trainer.
I understand, but. The only reason why we get that option, because we. But either way, you're gonna get fined.
They got two.
You have to say this, because we get federal fines.
That's fine, we can say that.
So we don't pick the second one, because we accept federal fines.
So we don't have that option of picking number, is what you're saying?
Right. Because you have, this is needed, if you get fined directly.
So this would only apply to private schools?
Yes.
I don't know why we found her then. Publicly available documents like newspapers?
So they're, so if they take a person, it's good for a year, right? This stuff is like, it's straightforward.
Information non-estimation.
I think the first one is when you first, when you first find a person unsatisfactory, you should be.
Genetic.
No, we got it.
Why are we getting into that?
No, 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 the first one is just the president or vice, and the second one is, we all.
The district offices health services, including Marius program.
No, I think. Well, it sounds like, I mean, the president has the right to notify the. The second one is the board, the board. So, and the reason why it's like this, because then, let's say, for example, you guys are.
Do we have this in color anywhere?
If you come back, then if it doesn't get better than you know, fine, you're right.
Is this that right here?
So it gives you options.
Did you guys get yours in color in your packet?
I found some that doesn't, and some that does.
I don't know.
No, but it's all about just. Because if, let's say, let's say I'm, let's say I'm notified, well, then I'm gonna be submitting.
No, this is the one that was supposed to work, but I don't see.
You guys didn't know that happened, you'd be like, why am I getting this?
Oh, here it is. Nope, it's not.
What color do you guys have? What color do you have?
Red. Our folders?
We're red.
I mean, our, our, he said our folders. Is that the colored one? We just are curious on this, the leaves of absence policy.
Which one?
This one.
We don't have the color. Is that color?
The one where it's all crossed out?
Yeah.
It's a rolling 12 months now, that's the same.
Read me the policy number.
You looking at that one?
1430.
What is it?
1430, leave, leaves of absence. I just wanna be able to explain.
Question for it.
If it's in color, I'd be able to. Well, this isn't in color either. It's not in color either.
You know what?
You said 14, 1430?
14, oh no, sorry, 1430. No, because we have, that's our policy, this, in this topic.
I'll also.
No, I was saying, you don't have.
Can you move everything into that?
Oh, that's right.
Trying to say in this one.
No, no, these are the same.
It's not colored.
Okay, so PMLA, that's the paid medical leave, is not required to have. PMLA is the paid medical leave, and you're not required to have it in policy, because it's law, same, similar to FMLA.
So that's, that's this one here.
And if you read the first paragraph, it says that they get no less than what the teachers have in their negotiated contract, because I think that one is for non-unionized employees.
Make the hesitation as the superintendent.
It says all administrative staff members not otherwise covered by the terms of negotiation. So I guess. It's basically the same as with the teachers.
So what would you write? Would that one be optional? I don't know. No, because the options are, the superintendent hired his doctor. The other option is.
It would fall under FMLA anyway.
Tells you what doctor it goes to. The third option is. Superintendent's doctor, the board's doctor, communicate, come up with.
Well, the superintendent is exacerbating, because he hired.
Well, it could be his family physician.
Should maybe put, or his representative.
Anybody. Take me out of the equation, or their representative.
So why are we, we need to.
And you can do that, I think that is one of the options.
Definition, a family member included.
But here's the problem, though, is if.
Right, but here. The definitions, why would you take that?
He can't really share anything with us, because.
You have to, because the superintendent's.
We don't have paid medical leave.
No, no, not.
But we can add, yeah, maybe add. Or his, by the superintendent, or his representative.
Okay, big, okay, so we, we don't offer it at all. Okay, so this is also paid medical leave.
You can still, like, express your wishes in the middle of the fun. I can't do the job.
I'm using trade up language, need some at the end of the benefit year, or a financial, they will be, will not, okay, well, that's, okay.
Yeah, I would make this as.
I don't wanna make the discussions.
It could happen.
See, either it passes, and we all follow, or it doesn't pass.
Says Jeremy Reiner, showing some guy's snow, he's a bastard.
You know, my.
No, no, we keep it, we just wanna add that, you know why?
No, but I wanna know what's going on.
Yeah, I just.
No, but look at the sentence, just so you're. I know, I know, it says the superintendent shall conduct an investigation. But I wanna make sure that it also, all, like, we're part of knowing.
Did you guys finish one of them yet?
Okay, let me read through it.
You finished the first batch? Okay, so you didn't start the second batch? Did you guys finish one batch?
No, we're almost.
You're still on your first batch?
On suspension, last week, after completion of the investigation. You see, warning, blah, 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 blah.
So the recommended action is about.
Where are you, 450?
Maybe necessits, which one, should, inform the board, should, yes.
Yeah.
So that's the recommendation.
That's the recommendation, based on that.
At the request of the board, you place on sixty. I mean, unless that comes up, you wanna be...
Would you say both, both can request?
Well, this is saying you're... Okay. The Board of Education?
Now, is it different from, like, teachers?
Don't you love the stuff in these? Okay. So it's another fifteen minutes of... Because when we get to the second round, you'll see the comments, and you'll give it a little quick. So we're both fifteen minutes.
This should discuss.
Did you give us two copies of the same?
No, two other copies.
But there is a lot of repetition in the policies. Is the four thousands and the three thousands will be...
I'm sorry, I don't know why I said that.
It is the board, the superintendent should notify. They said it, not the board. I don't wanna, I don't want the board.
Thirty-one twenty.
Written notice is provided to the determination, so that's when you're in charge.
If the Board of Education superintendent determines that it's not renewable, so it should also be...
So, but here, the superintendent should consider... This is what they have to do. Written notice is provided...
Right, but we should know when it's going to happen. Like, not... If he decides tomorrow, then we should know tomorrow. We don't wanna wait until sixty days, because it says here, Board of Education Superintendent.
Yeah, all of them.
But right away. Yes, but that's what it's saying. The written notice most people like.
My question is, why is this being...
Okay, well...
I have...
No, no.
I just don't like to take our board out of anything, because that's what... We don't know what's coming down the slide.
There's a right to create a position specifically.
You wanna create a position?
No, I don't.
And is the policy of the Board of Education to promote students' independence? Or any of these, or essential jobs functions with or without accommodation? Position doesn't mean anything. So why was both chosen here? Because of the absence.
But it was never checked off.
We had them go to...
Wait, this set goes into a...
So we're leaving that.
This is, they choose to go, right? And this is...
They have either or, right, okay.
That's for...
We're the safeguard, that if it would happen here, we provided it.
We're covered. You're changing them.
The position is...
Changes that little by position doesn't mean that it is...
The two positions shall be good, faith on a third impartial position.
Yeah, a lot of districts... If they're...
Well, these are all MCL, yeah. Each administration should...
Well, this one's in color. That's funny. I'm telling you what. So this one, we just check them all.
But they both should be...
Add a direct supervisor, because it's... And then we just took this off entirely.
And so just up there, before we turn my other person here.
So does this?
All positions. All creative positions.
That's why it says, it doesn't... Do you consider the advisability of creating this?
Done. Done deal.
So in other words, you hire someone, this person's like...
Yeah, we were volunteering.
That's right. Deal with it.
There's your safeguard.
We can't do it now.
I'll find a little...
You guys wanna raise end of shift?
We'll start a call.
Well, I don't think we can afford it.
We'll start a call in every school.
School-related event, common sense.
Good luck finding this.
Oh, really? Is that the problem?
This is already in here, so that's why we took that out, okay. In the last one?
They are.
Yeah, common sense, right?
Where are you guys at? Thirty-one twenty? Yeah, thirty-one twenty, one hundred professional staff.
This is all the same. You took your cup? This is...
This is my cup, please.
Securities under the...
Yes.
So the three thousand, the four thousand, they're pretty much the same.
That's just a walk-in night. I saw Donna Berry.
Professional staff.
And she had some very complimentary...
Please, no me, thank you. One's got, thank you.
And she said she wanted to make sure that people...
I had two of my own.
It just wasn't a better opportunity for them.
I had, I had two of my own. He gave us two. He sent us two to the house. So there was one in his...
Yes.
Two here.
Wait, there was one... No, he took the third one. There's one of each, right?
So this is a new, another packet?
Oh.
So we finished one packet, now the next packet.
I told you, and you said to me, no.
I messed up. Can you... He switched the rules on me, and I thought we were passing...
Because we're doing two... We're doing two of this.
But we have them all in our same packet. Remember last time you let us pass folders?
You're gonna pass folders. Everybody's doing two sets. Everybody's doing one thousand, three thousand.
We just finished the first one, but we are wasting time.
No, now you're on the... Now you should be on... What do you want now? You're on the three thousand. A lot of it's repetitive from the one thousand.
Are you?
Okay.
This is the only one.
My pocket.
Okay, where is it? Show me the... Because this one...
Rules everywhere.
Are you serious?
Finish this last one.
I think that... Is this, this, this one?
Not that one.
Right, that's what's confusing. That's what's confusing. That's the one he said home. We're on this packet, right?
That's a financial reward.
We're on staff discipline.
This one here, right?
Mm-hmm.
Board of Education for powers of reference, school code. And it just goes, draft form is highly effective, and ineffective, but it will off the law.
No, no, you're on the same one. This one. We just did this one. On this one. That one, you pulled it back. The pages look the same, but turn. It's staff discipline. I know, it's not meant to be confusing, I promise.
It's very confusing. It appears that this one actually drawn in necessarily.
So these ones, we didn't, we just adopted it as is and checked... We just checked them all. Probationary features, policies of all.
May not be rescinded.
It's all we need.
No.
Yep. So I like her standing.
Remember your comment.
Why isn't she here? I was kidding.
Remember your comment.
No, it's not. Hypocrisy, I tell you. That's different, he says.
What about if they're a good employee?
One casual resource person, yeah, yeah, I'm good with all these.
People do it all the time.
They've got notes for the...
Yes. Don't you watch the city council? It's your... We need to watch.
I'm already three away, so keep going. Whatever you do, you're gonna... But they don't get their job back. So what that means is, the minute somebody... So let's say Billy works for the district.
Okay.
The minute he hands me his resignation...
He's done.
Written resignation.
He cannot rescind it. Now, if another job opens that he wants to apply for, he has the right to apply, doesn't mean he can't get it. It's gotta go through the process.
But what about if they're a good employee?
Then you rehire them. Because I had that conversation with Neil Larek when we were going through this one, and I asked that question. And I said, what if something falls through at their old job, and they were wonderful here, and we want them back? And I said, I can't rehire them for their same position.
But they have to go through the interview process again.
Right, that's all.
You just can't rescind your resignation.
Wow, I have a hard time with that one.
Why do you want people to be able to hear? Just kidding, hear, just kidding, hear, just kidding. Like, no. Because it puts us in a bad split. If you wanna come back, you'll go through the process, women, like you...
It touches the dozens, it's tricky. It touches the dozens, it's tricky.
Yeah.
Kristen, did you need to change anything in this, or was it all set?
You don't remember the city clerk?
Why is it so wet?
We are not... You remember Tom Berry?
We are...
Restwood's good.
Restwood.
These are all MCLs, and they're all...
So what's if one knows...
Right, so that was... With the policies being updated, you're trying to... Now that everything is updated, even our... All our contracts will now be tied to this, and may have to be updated based on this, yes.
So what if they have their, you would have their criminal history before they actually physically start working?
Yeah, no one's allowed, like, state law, to start working until we...
Tell me about the process of getting a recommendation, and then we read this through...
Unrequested leave of absence. They have to go to their physician, doesn't have to...
I don't think we have too much.
So why would we take that out? I don't mean to...
Thank you.
Both, or both.
Didn't we just have that in the other one?
I didn't see it in the other one.
So we, we had both.
But it wasn't related to that one?
For the leave of absence, but that was for the paper.
Right.
Isn't this one under injury?
Yeah, this one's under injury. So you're saying keep it at both, their doctor and our doctor?
Either or, whoever they...
They want our doctor.
You want our doctor.
They're hurt here.
Like, I can go to my doctor, and I can... Whereas if we send it to our physician...
Okay, but what about if you have a good doctor? Like, my doctor is honest as honest can be, like, he would never...
Not, not everybody is.
Like, look at it from a, from like a, for example, from a board... From a manager, if we're gonna be paying for this, we want to go to our physicians. You know?
They're injured.
They're gonna say, my, oh, I, my doctor said I hurt myself at the school. Okay, well, you'll see our physician, that's...
They're gonna make it for anyways, I know how they are. Okay, so this is the substance. The Board of Education recommends...
I was gonna say, like, are we even really talking about that?
The Board recommends responsibility is just any manner recommended by appropriate specialist. A professional care staff member having an illness has been on...
My, my, my personal opinion, okay? If they said...
This one's...
If you have a reason to suspect, you can recommend...
What's that?
The... Yes, if you... It's like with anything.
No, we say, we did deal with that.
We have a foster family, three kids. Which I think we're getting them already.
We don't, not if it's happened, then we have a...
Are we good for a few more minutes?
Just a couple more minutes, please, yeah. Name associate superintendents, then.
You were gonna say...
So you are the...
Like, now, with the second round, you have notes, so you can...
There's compensation, A.
Yeah, it is, okay.
Yeah. The languages are different, or what? But it's the same thing.
Same thing, but one has...
Yeah, but default fifty, but it would just go on the home. But it would vote twice.
Because that was... It's not default.
Oh, because they're... Glad we got the, the ethics. And then... The appeal of the board. I was pretty vocal about that, wasn't I?
I guess this is like a real...
Terminated employee gonna feel the board.
Where do you stop?
It was my very last one. So I didn't... Reprint, but I guess the board should be coming in by...
If they're signed, I don't see where, um, we test them.
If there is something, then you might look at it. Again, not Dr. Masalas.
No, exactly, the gentleman, if you're doing your job correctly.
I don't want everybody to get picked on either.
Exactly.
We never...
Okay, so I have a question about this one. When do we actually do the testing?
For, for substances.
It's random. It's random.
So have we gotten it in here, or are we gonna write it? Because I'd like to see...
Yes, but I left my half in here at the... I brought my coffee anyway. Okay, yeah, then, coffee. So would you like, what, do we have splatter? I think you might be splattered. If there's stevia, I'll put the coffee with stevia, and I'll put my... Okay, because there's Splenda, no, the stevia.
If there's Splenda, it's a good choice.
Okay, all right, you want it in the first, be sure, right? I was like, I was in my greenies first, because that makes it...
And you found your possession used...
Okay, I have it here. I'll just add it. Thank you so much.
So how does the CED and all that stuff fall into the... And I wanna make sure that...
Are they moving it from back to back?
Yeah, I don't... If it makes you feel better to say... No, 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 it's an infection, possession used. Parentheses, excluding doctors, doctor's prescriptions.
Well, but that's not even that, yeah, you can take it like it in, in the description. That's why... Again, if they're under consultation, while they're at work, if you take it to the center, it's... No, 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 I would just ask... You can't just give a task, because they could have smoked a week ago, and it's not gonna come back.
My one personal thing is that day, when somebody...
If they're under the influence, and they're going, while they're at work, we take, we evaluate my...
What do we take?
What do I say? We gotta... No, we got a better one now.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, standard. Who is the student services special?
Is that the...
So we can test them on sites, or what?
Yes, yeah, okay, but we don't test for marijuana, because... They could have had it the night before.
Why would it?[1619.71]
But if they're, but.
Just if you're thinking.
The doctor evaluates them to see.
Complaint procedure.
So we, then we would test.
No.
We can't say we don't.
Testing is different. If I can't test somebody. It, I have marijuana, because it's gonna show a positive, it's legal, just like having a beer the night, the night before. No difference. But they, you can assess, the doctors can assess them to see if.
But isn't it legal that it's like the.
Uh, I don't know.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Poppy seeds are gonna show up. If you had, they have those poppy seeds, poppy seeds show up as.
I'm all about screening and exercise.
We gotta look for solutions, like where you draw the line.
So I assume you're saying the whole situation.
Superstars, Linda. How many bags is that? Two?
Are you guys good?
Not yet.
Who was the reporter?
Oh, it's right here, okay. So I'm gonna give you guys purple.
Oh, wait, I guess you just direct it, right?
Yeah, I left it over there. Here is.
There you go.
I don't care.
This is the only one with change. We're outside of change. This is number thirty-two fifteen.
Let you show us your good job. This is, this is a job. Not a job.
What is this? We will be updating this policy.
What does this mean?
Alright.
Thirty-seven two U F D S policy, so we will pause.
This is gonna be updated by the state. These are all NCLs. These are all stable, there's nothing. A lot of them, some of them are repented ultimately, sixteen nineteen.
Yeah, this is part of, these are thicker.
Oh, we did those.
Those are thinner. They probably gave us what they had sitting on their desk.
Yeah.
Who's got the report?
Yeah, it's the top one. The top one's.
The first couple pages were different.
So here's a new, the round one is.
Thirty-one zero, thirty company. This is eleven hundred and thirty-one, what do you have?
One hundred and twelve law enforcement, theatrical proxy, started pistols, ready to start.
Oh, it's because it's double.
You're right, that's the one that looks like, I have here.
This is the one I was looking for.
Is it this the same?
Yes, one is for, um, instruction of staff, the other one.
So, starting at eleven hundred?
Do you want me to go first? No, I'll take this, thank you.
I mean, we don't have the option.
So, uh, appreciated. I'll, I'll grab some.
So they have a choice. So when they do.
Yeah, I recommend. I think.
Well, they go to their houses.
So they have the option of having, we just don't have any cost associated. As long as they have the. Of course, I just wanted to make sure, everything else is paid for by the district. Yeah, I, I can't, I don't need it. If a school, you are all for.
How could you ever give it up?
Right, that's why this says only one. Correct, but this says only one, so when it says only one.
Oh, oh, okay.
We took it out, we said there, automatically we have to, right?
Are we stopping with somebody?
No, you guys run a break.
Nobody marked that.
Run a break?
Our custodian reports to the head custodian and reports to the.
Next one has a change.
No, the next one.
At our, at, no cost of the.
We took all of the options. But if we available to us, we. You know, because we get the group. Does it, eleven thirty? They wrote down the bottom, that they said the provision of any private lessons or services for fee without.
It's at no cost to the district. What I'm thinking is, remember I talked about this before, for, for school board members that don't.
Say that again?
Employees, officers, and agents should not engage in business private practice of their profession, the event of a service.
You did ask, you asked Gari. Gari said. You have your natural citizens.
Including, included by the way of illustration. Rather than limitation at the following, they just added for A, the provision of any private lessons or services for fee without written approval. They have to have written approval to do it.
So if a teacher wants to stay after school.
But I get what you're saying.
But if somebody else, in the future, like, if you have somebody who's sixty-one and retired.
What if, what if?
And is a school board trustee.
Right, but what if I think she needs better help, I, I ask.
No, we ask.
Technically, in the professional staff piece, we're not allowed to.
I'll get it again.
We're gonna have to look at that.
I'll get it again from. Cause you did, you asked when you first came out.
Yeah, yeah.
So you better play.
I was looking at a lot of this stuff.
So this is for.
I'll double check.
Right.
If you do pay for it, like.
So we can't put without written approval, cause if we put without.
No, it's not Gari, it's.
Then it means they're allowed to, if they get approval.
Yeah, but I'll double check, I'll, I'll double check with everybody. I'll have, I'll have any specifically I see.
Employees, officers.
No, they took that out a lot.
So that's everyone.
He's thinking health coverage and everything.
Should I engage in business practice or professional profession for educators?
You have to work a minimum number of hours a year in order to.
Educators, not us.
Anyone that works for school system.
They used to give health insurance. School board trustee. Uh, not health insurance, yeah, no, nothing, you don't work.
So you don't commentate that, that's why I'm, I think the tutoring one is.
I'm telling you, I heard that from.
That was probably back in the day when we got a lot of money.
I would never want that.
Health insurance is cheap.
Well, I thought.
Yeah, they pulled that out.
I'm glad they pulled that out.
When I throw something at you, David?
With my health insurance. I'm good with the sixty-four dollars, the only thing is I don't.
I was getting seventy, or seventy-five percent of the paycheck.
MTL or gifts. Hopefully, like somebody.
Where are you?
That's what. That's what the Michigan law stipulates, so actually.
You don't change that, David, your employer changed that.
Hundred fifty years less. We take that out. And say as determined bodies of the Michigan Department of State. And then that way, regardless of what they switch it to, you're covered.
I used to, I used to see seventy-five percent of my paycheck when I first started teaching. Now I only see fifty-two percent.
Strengthen it.
And just say. And that way, whenever that one changes, it's automatically covered, you don't have to worry about the amount you designate.
You gotta pick out one or two, sixty-four dollars by the, by the state. But it says option one or two. So you have to pick one or two. They're saying two, and it says one fifty.
Are you on?
Yeah, that was a recommendation.
You don't want to know what it is?
The, the law is sixty-four.
I got a question. I'm, I'm concerned. I wanna make sure. Serious health condition, also includes mental health, I don't know if that's a generic term. But the staff members.
So you're good with the one fifty?
Yeah, because that's what's recommended. Yeah, ISDs are on a different level, because ISDs make recommendations for all.
So like, uh, like, uh, contract. Coming out, taking you to launch, launches in the medium.
But I still think.
Right, right, no, I get it.
I was telling him when I. A few months ago.
Companies don't pay.
Company.
It's done, sue it, process it.
Sue, give them my name.
I wonder if we have that. Sure you do.
That's like a hundred fifty, hundred sixty person.
You do.
But if you're going to meet, you can.
You tell them.
I'm sure you can go and.
When you, yeah, you do, you get six weeks. You get six weeks.
You should expect.
Not to the district.
Oh, we do.
Explain to me why it's a.
Because the only time they can expense something like that is.
The only thing you gotta burn is your six days first, so that's why I might need to be sure, because.
Oh, I didn't know.
See, public entities.
Are you on twelve, ten? We didn't change anything there, other than who's responsible to those.
What was your question on the?
Okay, that's what I thought, but I, I just wanted to make sure, it's not.
It's nothing, no, there, yeah, there were no students.
Right, or just. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Andrea's gonna send you a little email, one of our bosses, one of the bosses had a little fire, but there were no students, it just happened. So just send it.
So, twelve seventeen, they did add after A, what that's under.
Oh, your, what?
Law enforcement, they need four authorized.
Cause it was already done. Not that one, that's a different one.
And then they crossed out.
I'm telling you, everybody's.
I'm on, uh.
I have no service in here anyway, I can't get enough.
Anti-harassment?
Boy, I'm gonna log the store, log the store, it's not unlocked. You, you can't have, unless you have an exempt permit to bring a weapon anywhere, so that should be strict, so.
So we're gonna be doing one.
No, guns are allowed.
Yeah, they have school property, exempt, exempt.
Well, well, hold on. It could be a student, it could be anything. It's a, it's a harassment general policy.
We've only done one.
Kind of what Rashid did, right?
No. This is it.
But if your policy says, if your policy says that, well, they're not allowed to. No, they can not.
Wait, why?
That is, but no, I think that, I even think that that changed.
Has it changed?
Because you are not allowed to.
No, no.
So you're not allowed to see. So I have, I have an exempt.
The only reason I know is because we had the stout meeting, because of the craziness. We purposely had it in the school, so nobody could've been watching. And that's why we were checking the method for making them go back to the park. Even if you wrote it.
Like, I have an exempt, sure, I'm allowed to go to a school.
And part of this is, some schools.
He's not an empo's officer, even, even the people who get, like, certified by the sheriff, they're not empo's certified. So they're not state certified.
So, if you get to sexual harassment.
By a sheriff.
There's an interesting.
I can take all the training.
You know, but if you're not, you are not, you don't supersede an empo.
I'm just unwelcome sexual proposition invitations. Think in a workplace, you can have proposition. This is Niola's template, surprise the word unwelcome. Just put in, meaning welcome proposition invitations, invitations, affirmations. Can we strike that out?
The one promise that one teacher has no date.
Are we good with this?
Put a note, put a note for me, let me check if it's an MCL.
Put it there.
What?
If you just finish one of your packets.
Go to the first page for sixteen sixty-two.
Yeah, didn't you guys get them?
No.
No, we're almost done.
You have our.
Check, check MCL, if you put check MCL, I'm gonna check to see if it's.
No, we're still holding our same packet.
Where's the page?
Oh, we didn't switch them. Where's the one that we just had?
You should have purple, oh, they have purple.
And you got green, and now we got.
We got one in the corner. Oh, you were supposed to take green, we should have took red, we're almost done.
Arrestment.
Sorry, take two.
Right here, saying check MCL. Sexual harassment, A. Unwelcome, just write that. Checks MCL, unwelcome, A.
Yeah, this is just CPL though, this is not, uh, yeah, but it's not, uh, empo, it's not empo certified.
I just make sure that it's not what's written in law, cause if it's not what's written in law, then I can call welcome and unwelcome.
Just remove it.
I gotta make sure that it's stated somewhere on sexual advancements. Cause you gotta have something on sexual advancements. But this is talking about sexual. But this is talking about sexual, this is like, in, please forgive me. If I go up to somebody and say something very. Flirting and that.
That's illegal too.
Yeah, exactly, but, um, it's not like I go up to someone, say, you got time, so I go for it.
She gave us one pack.
When we finish the second one, I'll test.
Then we'll give you, we'll give you, please, alright.
Around the three thousand?
Nothing changed here. Immigration, immigration. Creating of those things.
Right?
So when's the thing? This is saying no place should be responsible for more than.
I just wanna know if they changed it.
We got into it by people doing the wrong things too, though.
Who's defined as professional. Substances give the actual hours worth, there's not a minimum set of how many hours they can.
That was not, I thought, uh. They come in, they're there.
It was expanded thirty-three sixty-two.
Is that how, once.
It's all once. That's not how.
Same things with district.
You were on the board at the time, Manny, and Sal, where we saved about two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
I think.
We're paying the salt this way, Tom, remember?
Oh, yeah.
So if somebody showed up for two hours.
There was like twenty walking around the building.
So we're just walking around, all sunny.
They were hiding in the office in that one room. She plays off to Michelle, not so much.
But nothing changed on this, that's exactly how it was. Consulting capacity. It's a big fire consultant. Co-curricular, extracurricular activities. Schedule being basically.
I know, but. There's no changes. Oh, the first, first. On the stage.
Yes, um, volunteers.
What's the difference between executive and.
This just says if you, if this just says if you, volunteer, you have to submit a criminal background check.
Are these, these are not what we're voting on?
No, these are first read.
No.
Just means we're not.
No, we're giving, you have a choice.
So sometimes they'll find us in another place.
Job sharing, basically this means teachers can share.
So they can come to us within five days.
Criminal history, check, just based on the law.
People.
It's Monday, training.
I, I, no. Means.
It feels like Wednesday.
Fingerprints and everything. You didn't sign this?
Uh, criminal conviction review, uh, this just says if anybody's convicted, pending such approval, employee shall be placed.
Oh, why would we allow?
Uh, you would wait till they're convicted. Before you stop paying them?
Yeah, convicted, not, not.
I didn't like it for the kids, but I like it for the adults.
Superintendent is gonna process the necessary review.
Tenure. So you take it for part-time, a day, a fraction of a year.
Then Discrimination Equal Opportunity Employment Act is just basically.
That's a law.
Yep.
Which comes to Title Nine, it goes to the coordinator.
So it'll be, uh, how about on you?
Yeah.
Oh, no, that one's.
So this is the compliance officers, this is different than the coordinator.
But then he wouldn't be able, then. Just like the other one, shouldn't it be the S O S?
This is more making sure that, um. This isn't actually definitely investigation, because this is.
Cause your name is here.
Correct, this is making sure.
Yeah, but there's quite a bit that's removed here.
No.
The self-funded group, EAPs are owed the, uh, F C.
For the compliance officer, just to make sure that we're in compliance, so you can, I make sure that everybody.
Dr. Musal, you're.
I can take it off.
Why is the, uh, the self-funded group health plan different?
So, the way it works, on the self-funded plan, we pay for that, so that stuff in there is what we pay for. This is what is paid for by the insurance companies, so basically, the way it works.
Is that what you want?
So we're paying for vision, we're paying for EAP and health.
Yes, and the self-funded, the employees.
The federal spending accounts is their money.
Yes.
So we just.
Correct.
And the vision plan is not a part of the health fund.
Correct.
It is a. And if that money is not used. Then we, we get a credit. Next year, we get a credit.
I believe we rolled.
Right, which, that's how it was.
And actually, she's in negotiations right now for some new insurance.
Well, this is not, now we're going to the fully insured group.
I was the decision maker, he was investigating.
What you don't want is again.
So these.
But, but again, if you have knowledge of this community, you can't, um, represent and lead.
She explained it to me, cause we sat down. So roll back to the self-funded. So he shouldn't, cause I, I asked her, cause I wanted her to.
Self-funded adds medical plan, restriction drug plan, dental plan.
Yes, that's what we self-funded, that's what we as a district.
What about the vision plan?
That's in, that's a separate.
So that's insured.
That's insured, yes, this is insured, that's what we fund.
He should be able to get his recognition.
Alright, so here's my confusion.
Yes.
Long-term care plan was not in the initial. As long-term care plan is added here as a part of the insurance.
You're right, can you put that in?
No, we need to get a better understanding of.
Uh, just put, put, um.
Put down, clarify, the self-funded.
I'm okay either way, I just.
And fully insured group health plans. Right, thirty-four nineteen for one.
The way it was written, he, he can't heal anymore. If he's out there.
Thirty-four nineteen.
Correct, yes, you are correct.
Thirty-four nineteen.
It's healthier for you.
To clarify.
But it, but it was bizarre.
What's actually covered.
Is it that these are.
Especially long-term care plan.
The only thing that should be in any, in any choice is. The only thing that should be in any choice is. That's the only thing that should be, so that could have been a mischeck, a double check.
That's a big mischeck.
Yeah. While the self-funded is, we as a district fund.
One second.
And then the other ones are the full insurance plans, that's what we're paying for. But I will double check.
It's not, no, this is just saying that it can be the same people as the title line.
So who does that from?
Did you guys edit?
Uh, no, they.
So it would be you and you. So I was wrong.
So it was, right?
These are supposed to be HR.
So it should be, or should it be Andrea?
Yes.
So I was wrong. I'm just saying, if you're, like on the other one, if your name was on it, you can't give us a recommendation, you can only give your investigative notes.
Exactly, that's why, that's why I didn't think my name was on it.
No, but this is civil rights, that's not the headline.
Yeah, okay, that's right.
Yeah.
No, but we saw title line, only because if you read the blueprint, it says it can be the same people on this title line. Yes. This basically says that a complaint respondent who's dissatisfied with the superintendent can appeal through a written statement to the board.
I can do that now anyway.
Correct. You can't retaliate against them.
This one scares me because of what we did, went through with, uh, Van. Um, capacity of the superintendent. She didn't show up to work for that long period of time.
Corresponds with the other one, where we save everything.
Yes.
So the choice you have in capacity is.
Uh, drug-free workplace.
The superintendent's doctor.
What's the option one?
I mean, it's just option one.
The superintendent's doctor.
Meet the requirements of the act and compliance with the act.
Doctor of board services. They both can communicate and then tell the board to the recommendation. And then a top one person watching.
My wife.
I don't know.
Hold on, there's two.
Red line, I say red line. I'm with Brandon. No, usually not this, he would have watched this one, because he did.
Non-discrimination makes that.
But dynamic information. I, you'd be surprised how much I would give more text messages.
We ask anyway.
We could quote two thousand and eighty-two. Like two thousand or two thousand.
Final four and eighty-eight.
So who is the CO? Who are the COs?
You should, for civil rights.
But it says here that the complaint may be filed, the complaintant may file a formal complaint either orally or in writing with the principal, CO, superintendent, or other district official, and they should report that to the designated CO within two business days. So how does he report it to himself? How do you report it to yourself?
The CO is actually.
I watch.
Communications. She's the one.
And that's what we.
So we put your name first on the paper anyway.
And then you say.
So then Linda comes to me and says, we got a legitimate.
Is this the one you?
Or, I don't know if this is a legitimate thing or.
So it has to be you. It has to be.
I think in a district our size, um... Cause normally all the civil rights.
Well, I know it should definitely be within human resources.
Correct, and if nobody else.
This doesn't go in.
No, that, this one.
How are we doing?
I just don't know that it said, it should say. Other than this one. I don't know if it should say a society superintendent.
You guys, I'm done before you're on. Oh, okay, so we get the next one. And then when you guys are done, you're on break.
We don't have anywhere that says that.
We just wanna break, we're good.
Is the director.
HR calls.
So when you specify health.
Yes.
Does that include mental health?
Yes.
I wanna make sure.
Yes. Yeah, cause we offer.
EAP.
EAP.
Yeah, but they're not the same.
No, but they can, through.
Cause I.
We should have an organizational. Oh, that's what I'm saying.
Moves, or leaves are non-negotiable, obviously.
Section five four eighty-eight.
Perfect, thank you.
This is the one you wrote in.
How's that?
Sign it.
So it just.
Compliance officers.
Rising education.
They would. Somebody needs that, somebody need to do it. So what we have.
We are ready.
Life's job.
Employment contracts.
That's yearly now.
Everybody has a contract.
We have it yearly, right? Employment contracts are. Or is that only for, uh? Alright, I'm talking.
I'll get the text to fix my face.
Oh, yes, those are, yes.
Yeah.
There's a reason.
Staff reduction and recall.
It's covered by the top line.
They're redone.
We'll get them.
We'll go use the bathroom.
You got it.
Well, now it's done. You are special.
I'm Danielle.
I think you got some.
Did you guys?
I should be concerned. We have one of theirs.
We, we have not done red.
Here, here's red.
Not done red?
Here's red.
So give a red.
We did one.
Purple's gotta go here, green's gotta go there, I think, or red.
We haven't done green either.
Oh.
Yeah, you did the first half of green.
You did the first half of green.
Hey, we're doing the second half right now.
Yes, you're doing the second half.
The ones that she.
So what color should they have?
That's the one you marked out.
They probably still need red too.
You can tell by the marks.
Yeah, they still need red. What color are they?
They're.
We're black.
What color?
No, they're pen.
They're red. No, they're blue.
Yeah.
So blue is a red?
That's this one.
No. They're a little.
So then you guys aren't on break, sorry. Wait, you guys are doing both red right now?
Yeah.
Both and then they are.
They can take the second half of it and then.
Were you done with the second half?
No, but.
No, we'll do the first.
We're done, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, no, we'll do the first one, they do the second one, then we can switch, it'll be faster.
How about you do this one maybe?
I got it.
Put up something you can really enjoy. He's probably just watching his dad break, probably in awe that his dad's on.
Will mean they're taking away the power for anybody to investigate.
He's watching the board meeting. He's not watching the good of bed early? He's not watching Ms. Rachel? She wants him to go to bed early.
He has to have two, Pokemon and Ms. Rachel.
Okay, we're gonna get you one half of red, and then just take it over to the stones.
You are a scientist. You are a hooker, you're a hooker.
What color are you guys?
What color are we?
We're red.
You're red.
Two and fourteen twenty, right?
And then.
The administration's decision of closing the primary, it's not a review.
You're done on green.
Can you get fourteen?
Yeah.
And then we're done.
Criminal history check, this is the same.
Do you wanna be a part of a discharge or probationary?
Tell me where there's.
Changes.
That's why they're gonna appeal.
So this says who the district compliance officers are.
Cause they have the right to appeal. Any employee has the right to appeal. Do you wanna sit there and.
For civil rights.
I'll give them one more read opportunity.
Okay, because this says. This says district compliance officers, the other one said. CEOs should be listed, they recommend a male and a female.
Correct.
Who's our student services specialist?
Not subject to board review. So there is a. Just take that off the board.
No, is that the one that teacher tenure act? Misrecognition of opposing, it's not subject to board review, it's not subject to board review. First of all, it is final. Okay, so it's these. Just charge. Okay, this is the teacher tenure.
So this is saying.
The charge of a tenured probationary teacher. The motion of a tenured teacher, non-renewal of a teacher.
You don't need it.
Yeah, so that's state law, so that's why.
But they can still appeal.
They can still appeal.
Yeah, but how's it fine?
Because they wanna let the board know.
You wanna, you gonna overturn it?
They probably just wanna make it accessible.
Yeah, I mean, well, hold on, hold on.
Again, beyond you.
Yeah.
Next.
If you got somebody who's not doing their job, and you got people coming to appeal and you see a pattern, that's evidence for the board.
Correct, what if, what if the administrative, uh?
So on page seven of seven.
Who's picking on this person?
They wanna keep.
Now, if they say you.
Yeah.
Next, next administration.
Shouldn't that what would be in the ordinary evaluation process?
Yeah, but that person's out of the general.
But, but, but with, okay, so with the teacher tenure act.
The reason why those were found stopped is because we're.
They look at it this way. If the union allowed it, the union's not gonna allow it. If the union allowed it, because before we go to this.
We don't wanna keep the union in.
That's what.
Okay.
Because we're already keeping. We're already keeping, everything up there is already in the tax. So why would you say keep it again?
Different data may apply not to the number of teachers made nine or twelve.
I get it.
Of course, in computer science. By the state board.
We're not eliminating it, it's just already there.
We employ associate without a balance sheet, the person has to be sixty hours of credit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like that either. Why can't somebody pull their?
Cause if this, where you can vote for this, you can sign them.
Drug-free workplace.
Yes. You're on. I'll take that one for me.
I know, I know.
Yes, you get it on.
There was a. So why not do this? May not be, may, may then.
Yeah, I'm on, um...
That's what I mean.
Fourteen twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Non-discrimination based on genetic information of the employee.
So then we just do.
Let's select the student teachers.
They're in this one again.
Yep.
So how long?
Yep.
So we just said that, oh, you have to have at least three years.
Probationary teacher.
Okay.
The fourteen.
Stayed by the board.
Outsiders.
Outside, right, outside. Seventy-one sixteen, nothing? Seventy-one sixty-one.
Selecting student teachers and administrative.
Rest of the MCL, isn't it for you? No.
We'll add in, supervising staff members shall have in less than three years of successful experience in the area of assignment. And professional staff members who agree to serve as supervisors of student teachers or administrative teams may accept.
You get stipend two hundred?
You do not.
Oh, man.
Yeah, they get ten thousand.
No, no.
So you gotta read before that, though, right?
No.
Let me question the advances.
Universities are given, you talk about the student teacher.
Yeah, so if a teacher takes on a student teacher.
So that means if we're not renewing.
They get tied on the university.
If it's only like a four. No, you're, you're, you're all a candidate. So what is, what is the recommendation of?
University gives.
Starting what? I know, but.
Is it?
F F X.
Oh, three years only.
They're saying it should be the board. Sorry, since discussion.
But that's what he's saying. So just add the word five.
Organizing.
And then it's a first. Makes more people happy. Just add the word five. Right, this is. Non-renewal. She's saying something.
We do that.
Puss of lore.
So just put they, you'll notify them prior. Show it for prior, just put the word.
No, I have to push.
Everything's added, so the more protection is better for students.
Twenty-one prior to some.
Prior, prior to.
Don't depend on any.
That's what it's all.
Yes, ma'am. For the volunteers one? Why would we strike those? Why would we take out that?
He's on the forecourt, he's the policy of the board, the special.
And it's on form the board prior to notifying people to write.
Yeah, you can't take that away from the teacher.
It's where it's on him, but he's just. And it addresses their.
We knew it all in the first two.
So that we just didn't name them explicitly?
Yeah.
In case it changes, we'd have to change policy.
Basically, it's what it is.
I think that's what, now that you say that.
You have to leave it, it's a professional.
If we name it and it changes.
Been going on for centuries.
And we would have to do the policy.
Cause there, I mean, we can add in the word there, I chat, it's not an issue, but that's why, because the first two cover it.
So does you want to leave? Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Because it's state law, you have to do it anyway.
Yeah, I'll pop something to it.
Because that's why it gives you those choices.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not a smoker. I'm not a smoker. But this is private, and I know it's a school, not really, somebody would.
If the office.
But if they send her. Look, again, I'm not a smoker. I just have sympathy for people who take away their.
No, the last one is just leaving it as unspoken.
Dr. Lazar?
Yeah.
The compliance officer isn't a concerned specialist in venue?
I think so.
But this was, this one it says.
I think they're for two different things. One, I think one was.
One was civil rights, one was.
One was for civil rights.
No, this one's not discrimination. The civil rights is not the.
No, no, I actually, I don't.
Title nine?
There's another part.
I'm, I'm fine with whatever.
Services and you. This is civil rights, so it's you and Dr. Zell. Okay.
Yeah, I would prefer if they actually had that. Yeah, I don't.
Just we decide without the rest of them.
But we can. I just, we just work with law enforcement.
That's fine.
Yes.
I mean, what's the punishment?
So this is going to have the same process, that they can still appeal to the board.
Don't do it again.
Get citation.
So they're doing that same policy and it's just in other places.
I mean, I hope they'll do it for the kids, but. When teacher steps out back at school, nobody's there like, if they have an hour off.
They, they walk. Honestly, there's, there's a lot of places.
As long as they're not school prisoners, we'll stick with that.
I just want to get away from.
No, so yeah, why would we?
Then we'll be stepping outside the receiving.
And a civil rights teacher saying it can't be.
We even moved our tailgate stuff. We should keep it from our seniors. Before games. If we actually. Yeah, no, this, it's not far. I think that's what, uh.
That's the same thing as the other one. I mean, it's already said that. So this is really. Yeah, that's, that is the same.
As law enforcement personnel. Considered. No, they're not law enforcement. You don't have a law.
How do you dress in a manner that does not cause damage?
Yeah, they're allowed weapons under the control law enforcement.
What would that be?
I don't know.
No.
What if you're wearing a chain?
Oh, you're talking about our security.
I mean, that's so, the custodians got a lot of.
That's a good point. Yes, good point. We already noted the. Good point. Okay, thank you.
Danielle coming with your.
Good point, thank you. Yeah, these two.
Be groomed in such a way that the administrator's hair slides or dress does not disrupt the education.
I know the administration.
Or calls a health. Oh, this is what I was going to ask you. Just go back to this fourteen thirty-nine. It says whenever it becomes necessary to discipline and administer, the superintendent shall utilize the following principles and procedures. The board or its designees shall utilize the following principles and procedures. If the superintendent is the.
So here we remove it. Did you notice this under outside activity?
So the superintendent, so this word board should not be crossed up. Thirty-nine, one, one. At the bottom.
Thirty-two, thirty-one.
This word board should not be crossed up.
Staff members may not accept fees for students.
Because it doesn't mean that the board is doing it to, it just means that if it's the superintendent, it's the board.
Yeah, she's.
So we, we should agree with this. Because that should not be crossed up.
These are all done?
Okay.
That folder is done.
You just, you removed this from here without prior administrative permission for outside activity of staff? We talked about it. The music teacher wants to give it.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Superintendent, make plan.
You guys ready to trade?
We're almost done. Give us like three minutes?
We're down to like fifteen minutes. You guys might be done.
Is there anything else?
No, we have this one.
For them.
No, we, they have ours, we have theirs.
I know, I'm taking.
Which one is the illegitimate? Their deal is illegitimate. Student evaluation.
It's easy for him.
It's all we could fit in because we're breaking. Oh, that's the new one.
No. No, we can't, we have to.
Honestly, I read this.
Oh, hundred percent. Unless. Did we just do it? I thought we did this.
It's the same thing.
We did this one.
It's like, it's sometimes understaffed, sometimes under.
Oh, this is thirty-one, thirty-nine. Oh, this is staff. So we did the administrative. Got it. All right, back to rolling.
We okay with this? If we suspend those from written warning to write, uh, reprimand, disuspenstion to this charge?
Um, are we removing this resignation? It may not be rescinded.
Yes, up to you guys.
We're keeping it the way that.
I recommend.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Why is there a X?
That's because we're, we're accepting.
We're accepting.
Yeah, because.
Otherwise it.
We're gonna try to keep her locked before we accept a resignation.
If there's somebody we want.
Right.
The adminis, what does this mean? The administrator's decision to withhold any disciplinary action that is not subject to the board review.
So.
Adherence with tenure. This charge.
Those two things are part of the. Free camp, sorry. It's, it's embedded in my life, man. But there's some things coming down.
God bless you.
It's a piece about probationary teachers that's just like, happy to take the.
You were telling me.
Physical exam, we don't really, we reserve the right, but we don't.
Can you go to, um, thirty-one forty-one, one, one? Does anybody have comments on it?
Red T. Are you guys selecting this?
Thirty-one forty?
Are you saying we should keep it? Is that what your red mark means?
Is it crossed out?
It wasn't, there was nothing there, and then you marked it.
I think that was crossed out, or on a different one, so I was trying to keep consistency between.
You can.
Just want to make sure we understand.
I didn't sign every single page.
I don't know, did you mark? I don't even remember us talking about that.
No, you were here.
Oh.
Yes, that one should be there.
That should be there? You want us to keep it?
Yep. So what that says, if they want to extend their leave for any reason other than that, for any justified reasons, then they have to pay back the cobra. That's what that means.
Yeah, so if they're pleased to go to work?
Yeah.
Then they can't stay on leave. If they want to stay on leave, they got to pay their portion.
For one of those reasons.
That's why I just want to make sure that.
No, no, you're good.
We are in agreement, so this is that they have to pay for their insurance.
If, if they extend, if they extend for reasons.
Not listed.
Yes.
We're gonna agree.
So they laid in office. Because they have to send it to you.
So if a teacher has had tenure in another Michigan district, they come into the district with tenure?
One year.
One year, not five.
Okay. One year, no more than two years. Technically, you can extend it over to two years.
But.
Where are you at?
Is there going to be?
I'm at thirty-one sixty.
She's flying. Physical exam, we already talked about this, but this is about staff. This is not about arms, right? We're good there. So the next.
And then we still have the process of that.
The physician designated and compensated by the board. We, we have, uh, Dr. Wepe. A physician designated and compensated.
That's this one. We got one more packet.
But this is a physician.
It is a physician.
Shouldn't it be?
No, they, they have to go to the, they have to go to our urgent care.
That's what I'm saying, but it doesn't matter who is there. You're not being a doctor, you're being a service. Should that read it?
No.
Because they have to have an attendant.
And we can be specific and say, we don't want to argue, we want to argue.
Got it.
It's forever. Paperwork is where I live, so I can't just.
I honestly don't know if I agree with that. Saying that they can only go to the districts.
No, they can choose nerves.
No, they can't. They says a physician designated and compensated by the board.
Yeah, but this is to come back from leave.
We can add.
We can do or both.
We can.
But if we do or both, Danielle, then we have to check the, if they disagree, then they have to go to a neutral third party.
Yeah, because that's, you can't tell people what doctor they get to vote for. What if I have an issue and I don't trust the doctor that you're sending me here?
So we can do both.
It's different if it's a drug.
But we can do both.
Yeah, we can do both.
So the way, the way it is.
We just want to see.
I would. I would do both. That way, they're seeing your own doctor, but they're still seeing the district doctor.
So you gotta have, if they don't agree, you gotta have a.
Oh, no.
See, if you didn't live here?
I agree.
Right?
But it's striking this whole thing.
Do B A.
It makes you think.
I just had a meeting today with somebody.
When you told you.
I was looking for these, but, but wait.
Just put a probable clause.
But, no, 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 I think you should not.
You shouldn't.
Yeah, I can't be.
Oh, because it would be in front of people.
No, 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 no.
Right, but this isn't about testing. This just says that.
Can you go to thirty-one seventy? Case yours had the responsibility to correct unsatisfactory conduct or behavior resulting from a suspected health problem. Rest with the professional staff member. Failure to do so will result in appropriate corrective or disciplinary action determined by the board. Why would the board determine that? Why would the superintendent be the president or the person who these people would.
But this is just.
Why would the board?
So we need to have that for every student.
Yeah, I agree.
Schoolship.
The responsibility.
Yes, you can't be.
The professional staff.
No, no, I just think you should say that.
I think.
Promotion opportunities jeopardized by.
I was going to say, why is this a part of substance? Because that's a general link.
But it doesn't go with the first one.
Because we chose another one.
That these things are.
Then it should say the Prescott District recognizes.
I haven't, yeah, longer.
That the board should not decide that.
Oh, I know why I chose that off.
I think, I think they have to, if it goes that far, it's going to come to you.
Oh, right? Because the board of the superintendent is not.
Not, not if careful consideration.
Because we don't want.
Assistant as it is present, presently extended. The professional staff members having any other. Failure to do so, so the responsibility to correct unsatisfactory job performance or behavior resulting from a suspected health problem rests with the professional staff member. Failure to do so will result in appropriate corrective or disciplinary action as determined by the board.
So that you should, you should have that checked off.
We don't vote on that.
It's removed. Do you want that?
That's not, that's not.
We don't vote on that.
Let, let me tell you what this is.
Yeah.
No, no, no. Let me explain to you.
I was thinking of it the other way. Thank you.
This says if you use it for his administrators, don't reflect on this and see that they try to help someone. Then it comes to us.
The responsibility to correct unsatisfactory job. Resulting from a suspected health problem. Rests with the professional staff member.
So it's on them.
That's the employee.
So you're saying it's on them.
Failure to do so will result in appropriate corrective or disciplinary action as determined by the board.
So it's on them. This is not.
And what I'm saying is anything disciplinary for an employee.
You know, I thought, I thought because we're not, we're not judging substance abuse. It's a negative thing, but we're not judging it as like, you get fired, you got to work with the. Danielle brought up this point. If we're. Let somebody go here, why would it come for the board? Third paragraph.
So we continue to correct unsatisfactory job performance or behavior resulting from a suspected health problem rests with the professional. Who's the professional staff member? Is that the employee or the person who's obligated to correct it? Okay, but why would that, why would the board vote on this?
So why would it be? Oh, maybe because is there, is there a reason why? Is there substance?
This should not.
Well, I mean, if anybody's going, if there's going to be any type of termination.
We don't vote on.
You're, you don't, no, you'll vote on termination. The board does vote on termination.
So if you want to fire a teacher, it comes to the board?
Yes.
Then the board should be there.
Yeah. So any termination is approved by the.
But it goes with what you just said about prior, sending communication to Friday as well.
Correct, but this is also terminated.
Yeah, then it does, then it should say board. That's why I was asking.
What ends up happening is, let's say, for example, okay, this happens sometimes. We talk to an employee, and the employee in the district agrees to a separation, so then if an employee is terminated, that goes in their file.
I'm good with those.
So you have, um, you know, talking about local copies and stuff? My issue is I don't always have, I don't have Wi-Fi at home, so I would so want to have this.
Well, and that's why I just said that, just something for everybody to think about.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to think about, yeah.
If it's just you, then it's, then it's a lot less than size. But yeah, that's.
Providing a hard copy, you mean?
Got it.
I don't, I'm not always friendly with that.
It's so funny because like all the books I've ever had, I have them on my phone, and I read them on my phone, and I have no problem. But if it's like, uh, this, like a document like this.
Thank you, Ms. Plaus.
I feel like I need it. Me too, but, but I'll tell you, all my books are on my phone. Like everything I read, I read on the phone. But if it's this, something like this where I'm reviewing something, I need a hard copy. I feel like I can't keep track of it.
Can I take this one? Give Linda the marked up ones?
You suppose we're in my packet?
Yeah.
You have two thick ones.
No.
Yeah, here you go.
We can give you whatever you don't want. We'll shred or recycle.
Here, Billy's got a gift for you. He was working on it.
He was working on it. Haas had a whole bedroom set, but it's a clean set. But he's working on stage.
They have an old.
They have a president?
But the daughter.
So I just want to take my next steps?
Yes.
So I want to thank the board. Um, we actually, I think we did pretty well on this one. I appreciate your review and required coming in, because I think that made it a little bit easier as well. Uh, we're going to recycle all these papers. So what we'll do is, Dr. Lazar, as I did with the zeros, Dr. Lazar's going to follow the same format. She's going to send to the board the grid that has all the information, all the stuff to review for you to review one more time. Please, if you have any questions or anything, let Dr. Lazar and I know. Then at the next board meeting, we will do our first reading, as long as everybody's good with it. Move forward with our second reading, the following board meeting, so on and so forth. The next board meeting, we will review two thousands and only two thousands. The two thousands are thick and there was a lot of information, so that's why we did that one myself. And then when we start reviewing, it was the four through eight is left, correct, Dr. Lazar? The four through eight or four through six? I was forgetting.
For what?
Uh, policies, four thousand five. So it's, it's four thousand, five thousand, six thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand, but there's a lot of repetition. God bless you. A lot of repetition because it will, one, one of them will be staff, the next one would be administrator. It's a lot of repetition, so it would be embarrassing what we did today. Plus, a lot of it is N C L. So, does the board have any questions before we conclude with this? I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, we wrapped up a few minutes early. So I think we can, uh, before we adjourn, though, I did want to say I apologize for being late. I had a training at work, and I had a funeral to attend, and then made it over here, so, uh, thank you, Haas, for taking over for me.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by Mr. Seba, Trustee Seba, to adjourn, uh, supported by Trustee Baydun. Any discussion?
Six fifty-eight P M.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, adjourned at six forty-eight.
Thank you.
Thank you.